My end as well. Okay, guys, so we are here. Welcome to MTH 314 tutorial number two for the second midterm. So my understanding of what's going to be on this midterm for you guys is. Is. Have it here. Well, actually, it's pretty illustrative if we just look at the formula sheet, but. I is what I see rational numbers, the rationals. Divisibility. Then we have quotient remainder theorem. QR theorem. And then contradiction. Which we've already done in the last tutorial. We talked about proof by contradiction. And or no, sorry, not by contradiction, by contrapositive, which is not. The section in the textbook is also contrapositive. You can also expect few formulas. So and then, of course, mathematical induction. Induction. Yeah, so we'll go over some of these topics, especially I have a good few induction examples. But yeah, that's basically. That's basically the topics here. So probably, probably will spend a lot of the time. Doing some induction examples, but I guess at the start I have some examples here and whatever. So some people can send me, you know, you can email me questions just to my zoom name. And then if you'd like me to do some stuff, I got one email, so I'll look at those questions a little later. I guess to start with, we can go through just these two assignment questions someone suggested for me. So. Assignment six, question five, assignment seven, question eight. We can start there just because they're also not too bad. Yeah, and strong induction. Right, it's strong, which is say, strong induction. And so. Yeah, let's let's start with these assignment questions and then hopefully it'll it'll be. So here, I opened this up. So it was assignment. Six, question five, I'll start with. So here's this and yeah, like I am recording and. These notes will be posted after if anybody's gonna ask that. All good. So, okay, so here's our first question. This is assignment six, question five. So given any integer n, if n is greater than three, could n, n plus two and n plus four all be prime? Justify your answer. We're gonna use the quotient remainder theorem to help answer this, right? So if we have just basically three numbers in this form, which are two off of each other, could they all be prime? Well, let's just like try one like two, five and seven. These are not all, actually, these are all prime. Sorry, that's any greater than three. There's five, seven and nine. No, these are not all prime because this one's divisible by three. Let's try another one. Twelve, fifteen, seventeen. No, this one's divisible by three. Oh, maybe there's gonna be somewhere where they're all at least one is divisible by three. That's kind of the idea. There's at least one of these that are going to be divisible by three. But let's prove that. So just by inspection here, kind of, we can see that if you just try try these triplets, one of them will be divisible divisible by three. So let's say n equals. Yeah, basically, let's let's start with, let's say, the first number is a multiple of three. Right? Or, yeah, okay, and okay, this is how this is gonna do it. And the number that we're starting with is in one of these three forms. That's what I meant to say is. In one of these three forms. It's either three times some Q, three times some Q plus one, or three times some Q plus two. Basically, it's a multiple of three, it's one more than a multiple of three, or it's two more than a multiple of three. Right? And that's what the hint tells you to do is to write it using this quotient remainder theorem. Into one of these three forms here. It's it couldn't be in three Q plus three, because that's the same thing as three times Q plus one. Which is, that's just an integer. So that's the same as his first form. If you're three times a multiple of three, or if it's a multiple of three plus three, that's already a same thing as this. So definitely, the number can be written in any of these forms. In fact, that's generally true. Like, there's not really anything special about three here. Although even if they didn't give you this hint, you could notice that all of them, at least one of them is a multiple of three, right? So that's kind of our logic of using this multiple of three thing here. So we know it's in one of these three forms, so. Then if it's like this, right, then it's gonna be three Q. Okay, so yeah, then the numbers are gonna be three Q, three Q plus two. Three Q plus four. If it's in this form, the numbers are gonna be three Q. Plus one plus, did you give us one? Three Q plus one plus two. Three Q plus one plus four. And if it's in this form, the numbers are gonna be three Q plus two. Three Q plus two plus two. Three Q plus two plus four. And in all of these sets, there's one number that isn't prime. So, for example, here, that's not a prime number. Right? That's not a prime number because it's a multiple of three, so it's divisible by three. These ones are a little a little less obvious, but still not too crazy. So if I just look at, how about I move this over a little bit? Actually, I'll just highlight it. So that, that, that. So in case one, three Q is not prime. In case two, three Q plus one plus two, which is three Q plus three. Just three times Q plus one. Is not prime. And in case three, three Q plus two plus four, which is three Q plus six, which is three Q plus two. Is not prime. So there we go. In all, we've divided it into three cases. It either is a multiple of three, one off of multiple three, or two off of multiple three, the starting number. In all the cases, there's one number in the sequence that's not prime. So we've shown that, no. It's false, like they could not all be, they could not all be prime. But just to recap here, kind of how we solve the question. Part one was kind of just testing out numbers, testing. Notice that one is a multiple of three always. So then we break that up into three cases. These are the three ways that this number can be written. Switch colors here. And can be written as. Yeah, so prime, so if someone asking, why can't they be prime? This, this, this one's not prime because it's a multiple of three. Right? So it's divisible by some number other than. I guess, sorry, since. Three divides three Q, right? Three divides three Q. This is not prime since three divides Q plus one. That's a three Q plus one, three divides three Q plus one. And this is not prime since three divides three Q plus two. Right? So. We basically say there's three possible cases of the starting value, again, these these values. And they have three different sequences, and I've just basically shown that there is at least one number in each of those sequences that is not prime. And yeah. That'll always happen. In fact, a little bit more strongly showed that there is at least one number in each of these sequences that is a. Is a multiple of three, but that's not really what the question was asking, but it is also true. There's always one number in this sequence that is a multiple of three. Okay, hopefully that made sense, this question here. Does anybody have any questions? Feel free to let me know. At all. So. Yeah, there's that. I'll move on. Next one we have is. Find it here, question, Simon seven, question eight. Now, we can also do more assignment questions if people want to do more assignment questions. I'm sure you've done them, but it's still good to go over. Maybe not everybody's done them. Properly. So Simon seven, question eight is an induction question. What kind of basically? Simon seven. So. Yeah, here we have a consider the following predicate. We have this predicate P of N is this right here. Remember, predicate is a statement where you have to put a variable in. So we have to put a value of N here to make this a statement. We're N is some integer. Prove that for any N greater than zero, this implication is true. That's what matters, that this implication is true. Remember, if this is false, the implication is true. That's an important thing to remember. If this, the hypothesis is false, the implication itself is true. So, yeah, so this hint is actually very, very convenient. So you independently. Two cases, that, or if N is like that. That breaks it up nicely. So we'll see why. So let's start with this implication. Part A. We want to basically prove that assuming. Assume six N plus two equal, is less than equal to to the N. Then show. That six N plus one plus two is less than equal to two to the N plus one. So the way I would probably go about doing this is. Yeah, I'll just, let's go through it. So the way I go about doing this is trying to manipulate this side. To get a six N plus two. Because then we can use this fact. So that's probably a good place to start. So like distributing this will give us a six N. So I'm gonna say six N plus one plus two is six N plus six plus two. And I'm just gonna rearrange this into six N plus two plus six and just put brackets around that. So the reason I'm doing this, the reason I know to do this is because I know something about six N plus two. I know that that's less than to the N. So, so I'll write that here. We know. We know six N plus two is less than equal to two to the N. We also know that for N greater than equal to three. Six is less than two to the N. This is a little bit of a more. Strange fact. Why would I come up with this? So I'll show you how you could think of this in a second. By kind of manipulating this other side, right? So this this other side of the inequality here is two to the N. Times two, right? Which another way to say that. Move this over a little bit. Another way to say that is two to the N plus two to the N. So basically, what we're trying to show is that six N plus one plus two. Is less than equal to. Two to the N plus two to the N. It's up a little bit. Hopefully that makes sense. I should have the chat open. Don't we always have to start with the base case? Yeah, so this isn't actually like a proof by induction just yet. It's basically the base case is gonna come after here. You could do the base case, you could do the base case second. It doesn't actually really matter as long as you do, as long as you do both. Yeah, basically, it kind of gives it away if you try to do the base case, a little bit, a little bit gives away the the problem, so. That's why it's it's second here. Doesn't really matter. Yeah, you will, it will be, it'll be confusing if you start with the base case. So, okay, so so here we are, just to recap, right? We're assuming this fact is true, which means we know this, right? We know this down here. So it's highlighted that. That's from our assumption. Then we want to show this fact is true. Basically, what we want to show is that, right? That six N plus one plus two is less than two to the N plus two to the N. So we know that this is less than two to the N, and this is less than two to the N for N greater than three. In the specific case that N is greater than three, we know that this is like this. So from here on, I'm only talking about N greater than three. I'll just kind of draw that and or equal to three. And greater than equal to three, right? If it's two to the three, that's eight, so eight is bigger than six. But if it's two to the two, that's four, four is not bigger than six. So what we can say is that since this term is less than two to the N, and this term is less than two to the N. All in all, this entire thing here, why do I have two black markers? I don't know why. All in all, this, let me choose a, I don't know, blue. Is less than or equal to two to the N plus two to the N. Right? Because this is less than two to the N, and this is less than two to the N. So this whole quantity is less than two to the N plus two to the N. Hopefully that makes sense. So we showed it. We successfully showed this inequality is true. We successfully, like, so therefore. Six N plus one plus two is less than equal to two to the N plus two to the N for N greater than three. Equal to, very equal. We've showed it for N greater than equal to three. That if N is less than three, then we have, then this isn't true, that two to the N is bigger than six. That's that's not true. So a good strategy here, hopefully, if you have a similar question like this on the test, is like you, you break up this two to the N plus one into two to the N plus two to the N. And then each individual term here, you have to show that it's smaller than two to the N. Okay, but now what about for N equals? Let's say four. Four. And well, N is an element of zero, one, two. Well. For N greater than equal to three, you should feel because we're saying. For N equal to three, three plus. Is there equal there? Well, this statement. The, yeah, it might fail. Well, you'll see, because, yeah, yeah, let's do this first, and then hopefully that explains it. So for if N is in this range, then what are we trying to imply? We're trying to show that six N, what are we trying to say? Sorry, six N plus two. Less than two to the N implies. Six N plus one plus two, less than equal to the N plus one. Well, if I just substitute any of these numbers in, let's just try it. So substituting zero in, for N equals zero. It's gonna be two is less than equal to one. How about I write it in full? So six times zero plus two is less than equal to two to the zero. I'm not even gonna write what's over here because it's gonna be zero, or it's gonna be two less than equal to one. That is false, right? That's false. Therefore, the implication is is true. Right? So the implication is what we care about. We don't really care about the first fact. We just care that the implication is true, and that is true. This is false. This is false. Therefore, for N equals zero, implication is true. And you can imagine it's the exact same thing for N equals one and N equals. N equals one, it's gonna be six, I'm not gonna do everything, but six times one plus two, less than equal to two, the one, which is eight, less than equal to two. That's again, false. False, therefore. For N equals one, implication is true. Is true. And then finally, for N equals two, it's the same thing. I don't have to write everything, but blah, 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 blah. Same thing, same. Unless somebody would like me to write it, but yeah, say the same thing for now. So there we go. So all in all, here, we've now successfully proven that P of N. Implies P of N plus one. For all N greater than equal to, uh, greater than equal to zero. Also prove it up to N equals one, there's prove N equals zero by inspection, sure. True by default. So if if P implies Q, the truth table for P implies Q is just get a nice copy. Someone asked, why is the implication true, right? So if if the if the hypothesis is false, the implication is true. So that's what we care about. That's that's all we care about when we're doing induction. We just care that this implication is true. So, yeah, so. That makes sense. True by default. Okay, so that's it for part A. We successfully did part A there. This implication broke into cases. The reason it was important to break into cases is because this exact step right here, right? Six is only less than two to the N if N is bigger than equal to three. Because if N is three, it's eight, so six is less than eight, anything less than that doesn't work. But the implication is true. That's kind of what I'm trying to hammer right here. Okay, so that's part A. If anybody has any questions, feel free to let me know. Let's move on. Otherwise, don't have pens in this version of OneNote. Try a new version of OneNote here. You substitute, you can prove for N greater than equal to one, maybe, possibly, yeah. That makes sense. Okay, so for part B. So use whatever, use a black pen. For part B, it says, prove P of one is false and P of five is true. So remember, P of N. Was. Six N plus two, less than equal to two to the N, right? That's what it was, right? Yeah. So P of, P of one is six times one plus two, less than equal to two to the one. So it's gonna be eight, less than two. This is false. And then P of. P of five is what the question asked for, right? P of five is, should P of five is true, so it's gonna be six times five plus two, less than equal to two to the five. I'm sure you guys are able to do this. This is thirty two, thirty two, right? Thirty two, less than equal to two to the five is eight, sixteen, thirty two, thirty two. Thirty two. Oh, so that's, yeah, that is thirty two, okay. Surprised you get the same number here. I don't know why. But anyways, that's that's fine. It is true. So it is true. Okay, good. So that's that, that's B. And then part C is consider the logical statements for all N greater than equal to zero, P of N, for all N greater than equal to six. P of N. This is basically this, you can disprove by counter example or disprove. By counter example. Counter exam. Namely, P of zero. Is false. For example, or P of one or P of two, whatever. But this one you can prove by induction. Prove. By induction. So we'll do that, or we can. So for part C, like I'm not gonna talk about the first part, but for part C here. We want to prove that for all N. Greater than equal to six. P of N, which is equal to, or whatever, same as, or. Too many symbols I can't use here. There you go. Say, it's equivalent to, allegedly equivalent to, there you go. That's a symbol for all N greater than equal to six. Six N plus two is less than equal to two to the N. That's what it was, right? Yeah, sure. Sounds good. Then. Okay, we need to prove this, so we can just basically prove a base case. The base case is by induction here. We would do it by induction, right? Because we want to show something for all this set of numbers, all natural numbers greater than six, greater than equal to six. So we can just show the base case. So induction has two steps. Induction has two steps. Step one is show. P of six is true. This is done just like manually, like we just did before, right? So this is P of, I mean, yeah, you don't, you can use P of five from before, you can use P of five from before, but just say, let's just use this. Less than equal to the six. So this is thirty six plus six is thirty eight, less than equal to sixty four. That's true. And then part two is show. The inductive step, or this is the inductive step, inductive. Step. So this is saying that P of N implies, or yeah, P of N implies P of N plus one. We show that's true in part B, right? We showed this. True from, oh, part A, I mean. Part A. This is true. True. Therefore, we proved it to be true. Therefore, true by induction. So you can think of this, like, just give you a little insight. We probably heard this before, but just give you a little insight about like what induction is doing, right? So like, you can think of it as like a bunch of dominos. So you have P of six, P of five, of P of seven, P of eight, P of nine. The sequence of predicates. All we need to know is that the, you know, one of them is true. You know, let's say P of six, we just need to know this one's true. And we need to know that, given that any one is true, anyone is true, the next one's true. So that's kind of what this is saying. This is just saying like, one of them is true. Given that anyone is true, the next one's true. So it's like dominos. If you have a domino, you have a bunch of dominos lined up. Oh, this is gonna freak out on me now. Let's see if, I don't know why it's pacing there, but just gonna live with that. Oh, boy. Okay, it's freaking out on me now. Let's do this, nicer. There we go. All you need to know, to know that all the dominos will fall, there's two things you need to know. You need to know that at least one of them was pushed over. One was pushed. This is the base case. And you need to know that they're spaced properly. Spaced so that. If one falls. The next will. Next. Will. This is the inductive hypothesis. Inductive step. Right? So that's all you need to know those two facts to know that all the dominos fell that. At least one was pushed somewhere, one was pushed. And then that they're all spaced properly. So you know for certain that all the rest of these dominos will fall. So falling is the truth, is the predicate being true. And being spaced properly is the inductive hypothesis being true, this implication. And then one of them being pushed. Is the base case. Hopefully that makes sense. Very, very common analogy for induction, for induction, but. Also one that I like a lot, so. I mentioned it. This is the domino analogy. Yeah, so that's, that's that, basically. That's that whole question. Question eight. So I have a suggestion for another question, but if anybody has any questions for me, feel free to let me know or unmute if you'd like. But yeah, otherwise I'll just grab that next question. So question four and five from. No, yeah, that's not too bad. Question four. Try this. So this is from winter. Twenty twenty fourteen. Can I spell twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen? There you go. Let's give this a shot. Use mathematical induction to show this is true for all integers N greater than equal to two. And what's question five, second? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, so let's see. We have here. To do induction, again, we need the two steps. Oh, sorry, what are we showing? We're showing this sum is equal to this closed form formula, right? So we have this, the series, and we we have a formula to that equates to the finite series, just showing that it's true. So again, for induction, we always have two steps. We have a base case. Base case, that base case will be will be basically, I'll just show that it's true for. Yeah, so for N equals two, right? Because that's the bottom of our section that we're trying to prove. So for N equals two, this is the sum. I goes from one to two minus one. Of I, I plus one is equal to two, two minus one, two plus one, I'm sorry, two plus one. All over three. So this is the the sum. I goes from one to one of I, I plus one equals, so it's two times one times three over three. This is just one times one plus one equals two. One times two equals two, two equals two. Amazing. There we have. So that is clearly true. True, therefore, base case, you know, P of two, I guess you could call it, is base case. And true. Basically saying true, therefore true, but whatever. So we've shown our base case. This is like pushing over that first domino. Now we just have to make sure that if one of, if it works for one of the formulas, for for one of the N values, that it'll work for the next N value. That's the spacing, that they're all spaced apart properly. So for part, this is the hardest part, of course, is the inductive step. So basically, you know, show, show that. Or basically assume, it's the better, I like to phrase like this, assume. Or basically assume, it's the better, I like to phrase like this, assume. That for some. And greater than equal to two, um, the following holds. Holds, uh, which is the formula, right? So the sum, I goes from one to N minus one of I, I plus one equals, uh, whatever it was, N, N minus one, N plus two. All over three. We need to use this assumption in the proof for the inductive step, yeah, we need to, we will use this for certain. Right? So this is like, this is, this is a benefit to us, like, we have a fact that is true here, we're assuming that this is true. And we just want to show that this implies that the next one is gonna be true. So, so assume this, show. That um for N plus one, that N plus one minus one, uh, so I said the sum, N plus one minus one. I goes from one. To that of I. I plus one equals N plus one. And minus one, or N plus one minus one, N plus one minus one. Um, N plus two, all over three. If we can do it without the assumptions, the proof still valid? I don't know if you can do it without the assumption. That wouldn't be by induction then, that wouldn't be by induction. That's my understanding, that wouldn't be by induction. Okay, um, so now we're here. We want to uh show that this is true, assuming that this is true. So basically, we want to do a little bit of like moving stuff around over here to try to get things into uh the right form. So if I'm not mistaken, N, N plus one. N minus one. And plus one. Yeah, so uh, hopefully I have my sums here, right? So, okay, so this left-hand side is the same as I goes from one to N minus one of I, I plus one. Plus this, uh, plus, and then we just need the N plus one term. It's gonna be N plus one. Times N plus one plus one. Equals this. Whoops. I guess I can't copy and paste in this. N plus one. N plus one minus one. And plus two, all over three. I hope I did that right, I, there's a solutions, this person's having a solution, so let me just make sure that's right before I start explaining. Question four, is this question four, yeah? N. Minus one. N minus, N minus one, I, I plus one, N, N plus one, oh yeah, I did something wrong. N. The sum goes from this and. Okay, yeah, sorry, I did some, something's up here. This is, okay, so basically, there's only one difference between this sequence and this sequence or a series. There's only one term off, and we just gotta get that term, just manually add that term here, that's basically the thing. And I'm just getting the term wrong here. So this is gonna be one. N plus one, oh, minus one, so we, we have to. Yeah, yeah, I'm just comparing it like this, okay, so before I, before I do this step. This is going to be the sum, I goes from one to, okay, so it's N minus one plus one, I, I plus one equals, and all this again. Hopefully it lets me copy and paste this time. There you go, good. Well, yeah, so you're saying it should be only an N here, but it, we want to have an N minus one here because we need to use this step. That's, there has to be this term, this term has to be there because we know that this is equal to this. Um, again, the difference is, just, I'll explain here, hopefully I'll keep coming up with a way to do it. Um, is that these sequ, series. Series are off. By one term. That's the term. At N, yeah, at N, because it goes to N minus one, yeah, yeah, yeah. Goes to N minus one plus one, so it's just the term at N, that's the term at N. So you just evaluate this at N, it's gonna be N times N plus one. Which. Is the term. At I equals N, right? Because this goes all the way to N, right? This, I, I know I'm not writing it as, uh, okay, I guess I can write it as N here. So this sequence or series goes all the way, there you go, this makes sense now. This series goes all the way to N, I equals N. This series is one less than that. The difference is the term at I equals N. I'm just gonna manually put that here, now this is equal to this. Right? We have this, uh, this and this are the same thing. That's right. But now we have this, that's convenient. The reason that's convenient is because this we know is equal to this. We know that for a fact, we're gonna use our, our inductive hypothesis here, right? To substitute that in, so we know this, I'm just gonna hi, oops, gonna highlight this. So it's a little bit of moving around sequences, um, serious, whatever, but it's the uh same thing. So yeah, I'm gonna put N, N minus one, N plus two, so N. N minus one. N plus two. All over three, right, three. Plus N times N plus one. Equals, and then we still have all this. And basically, now we've got to show these two fractions are the same, this is not wildly hard. Why is it, why is it pacing there? Who knows? Trying this new version of OneNote, I think my handwriting is a little nicer with this new version of OneNote, but uh pacing is weird, I don't know. Anyways, now I gotta show this is true. Again, not wildly hard, so it's gonna be N times N minus one, N plus two, plus three, N, N plus one. All over three is equal to, um, yeah, I, I guess you could just do N. A plus one. Uh, N. N plus two. Oh, my bad, sorry, it's supposed to be, that's supposed to be N plus three, right? Because I, yeah, let me, let me highlight this because I made a little mistake here. So I'm plugging in uh N plus one into this formula, so that's supposed to be N plus one, N plus one, and that's supposed to be N plus one there too. This was the N plus one. Hopefully that makes sense, so this is supposed to be N plus one, two. And it's supposed to be N plus one, two. And this is also N plus. Okay, N plus three here now. Um, and uh, yeah, okay, so I mean, at this point, we can just, uh, I don't know what we'd do, what, what does the solution do? Just foil it? Or just? It was right before. The original's N plus two. And then putting in N plus one. This should be right. N plus one. I'm putting, I'm replacing N with N plus one. This is P of N plus one. Then I get this here. Uh, you're just, the re, it's just like algebra at this point, this is not, this is not that crazy, what is the? What do they do? Three. Uh, how do they turn into that? At the end of the solution, yeah. Somehow they turn this, they rearrange this. I guess you factor out an, you factor out an N. By algebra law. You factor out an N. And so you just have N minus one. N plus two plus N plus one. I mean, okay, I, I'm certain at this point, if we just foil, foil the top, we'll get the same thing on the side, but I'm just confused what they did in the solution, that's. Just kind of magic, just kind of a little algebra magic here. Basically, I'll just show you what I'm confused by. So uh, basically, they write that step. That step. Oh, no, oh, sorry, and then they wrote that equal to. They wrote that's equal to this. No, but that's not, that's not, that doesn't make sense. They're doing it kind of differently, I guess. Because that doesn't. That is what I have on this side. This is gonna be N plus three. Plus two. That is fine, yeah, okay, anyways, yeah, I'll just do it by foiling, I guess. So this is gonna be uh, N, whatever, you can foil this, I'll just get Wolfram to do it, and I'm sure it's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be. N plus one. Times N. Times N plus three. That's just N cubed plus four N squared plus three N, or I just factor out N, I guess. Gonna be N times N squared plus four N plus three over three. And then uh, this is gonna be N, and then gonna be the same thing in it. N minus one, N plus two. And plus one. Gonna be. Uh. Gonna be N minus one, N plus two, plus N plus one, not the same thing, okay, so there is something wrong. Because I got N. Plus N squared plus two N minus one, okay, so there is something wrong, let's go through it. Um, this is our. Assumption. Which is the correct formula. N, N minus one, N plus two. Ah, it's a plus one here. That's supposed to be a plus one? Yes, 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 there's the mistake, there's the mistake. That's what you were saying in the chat. Yes. That's what you were saying in the chat, I understand now, thank you. Um, so that's, let's just highlight it, so that's N plus one. It's N plus one, N plus one, so this should be an N plus one plus one. Plus one, plus one, plus one, it'd be plus two, this will be something different in here now. This will be a N plus one. Times N. Times N plus two. Or whatever. Which is uh. N. Times N squared plus three N. Uh, plus two. Still off. Three N, N plus one, and zero. N plus one. It's an N, N plus two. Everything looks right. It's obviously not. And did I do something wrong here? That's a three N plus one. Oh, did I get the formula wrong here? This is, no, that's, the sum I goes from one to N minus one is equal to. And, and, oh, yeah, yeah, there, there, that's supposed to be a one here, that's supposed to be a one here, that's supposed to be a one here. There we go, we figured it out, it's all that mistake, it's all that, just I copied it wrong. So this is N minus one. N plus one. N plus one. Finally. We get. N minus one, N plus one, N plus one, times N. Write it here. Oh, okay, still a weird answer. This is N. Might that be incorrect? Of course, I'm having issues here with it.
Um, I think you forgot the three in the numerator and the something else.
Yes, I did, I did, yes, I did. Thank you. So it's three times. One. Finally, hopefully, is the end of this. Is N squared plus three, N plus two, amazing, N squared plus three, N plus two over three, and then we're done. So the entirety of the difficulty of that question for me was doing the algebra correctly. There we go, and we're done. So this is obviously true. Um, so uh, we've shown the base case, or sorry, we've shown the base case, we've shown the inductive step, therefore, the formula is true. Therefore, uh, true by induction. Okay, let me recap that because that took a second there to, to fix the, the mistake there. So recap, uh. There's our formula we're trying to prove, base, we're showing it for all integers greater than two, greater or equal to two. Base case, we prove N equals two, just the smallest of the range here. Then we do the inductive step, so we make this assumption, which is that uh, this is true for some N. And then we just want to show that it's true for the next value, next. Next value of N, one higher. So uh, we write that formula using that higher N value, which is looks something like this. And so I just replace N, basically, I replace N goes to N plus one in the formula. And then we simplify a little bit, we get, this side turns into this, again, this, I have to get this somehow. It's very important that I get this, because that's the whole, kind of the whole point of the induction, is that I use this assumption that I've, I had before. So this series is only off by this series by one term, and that's the term at I equals N. So I just put that term there, this is equivalent, right? This includes I equals N, this doesn't include I equals N, but I'm just gonna put that term here, so now these are equal. And so I have this, this I know from my inductive hypothesis, I know this is equal to this from. Uh, hypothesis. This, there we go. And so then I just do some algebra, which hopefully you can do properly better than me, and then uh, you show that the two fractions are, are equivalent there. Uh, you can factor out N, N plus one, just read it off, yeah, that makes sense, that would have been much easier. Because I'm not in my algebra move right now, move right now. Okay, so uh, there's that. Hopefully, that makes sense for question four here. Let's look at the next question. Let's look at the next question, this one is uh, a sequence one, so I tried this, I tried this before, I didn't quite have time to finish it. So let's just try it here, I have a solution now though, so that's, that's, I mean, we can get through it at least. Um, but uh, yeah, let's just try it here, so if there's any questions with this one, feel free to let me know. So here we have uh, let F of N be the recursive sequence defined as follows, so we have the first term is that, the second term is that, and then this is our recursive formula for N greater than equal to three. Prove that this formula holds for all integers N greater than equal to one. So we need to show, of course, oh, well, dues by induction, right? Because we're doing, uh, we have this, a whole range to show. So we need to show the base case. Which is basically just that it works for some small value, so on the uh, example here. It shows like, it shows for N equals one and N equals two. So for N equals one, it's going to be uh, yeah, it's gonna be uh, F one equals two to the one plus one, which is three, and that of course matches. Um, also for N equals two. I don't really know why also for N equals two, maybe just to show the range, but yeah, it's gonna be five. Uh, which of course also matches. Okay, and now, what we need to do, so I have the chat open. Right, it's for the values given, yeah, so it's just, yeah, that's basically our base case. So then the, I guess, part, part one is that, part two is the uh, induction. So assume that the formula holds for some, I'm just gonna follow the solution here, so assume that it holds for some uh, I value, so that's F. Uh, I equals two to the I plus one. And basically, we need to show that uh, yeah. Oh, that's a strange way to do it, okay. It holds for. Okay, so yeah, so this is, it's, it holds for I values as long as I. Is less than equal to N minus one. Um, so this is like our hypothesis, and we need to, so this is our assumption. And then we need to now show. That uh, right, so if it holds for I less than this minus one, um, or equal to this N minus one, that it's gonna. um, or equal to this n minus 1, that it's gonna hold for the next one. So it's, it's holding for all these i values up to n minus 1. It's holding for all these n values, up to n minus 1. So this is like, well, what's our bottom? Our bottom is, uh, 1, right? So 1, 2, 3, dot, 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 dot. I guess I shouldn't show dots, but dot, dot, dot. Uh, and this is n minus 2, n minus 1. And, so we're saying, assume that it holds for all of these, show that therefore it must hold for n as well. Show that fn equals 2 to the n plus 1. So, uh, yeah, we can just do that. So this is basically, uh, we, with the, um, we know another way to represent this, that's kinda the whole point. We know another way to represent this. So the way to represent that is using this formula right here. It's gonna be 3 f n minus 1, minus 2f n minus 2 equals 2 to the n plus 1. And, uh, we can plug our formula in, right? So we know that this formula works, right? We know this formula works for all the lower values of n, right? Because that, that's what we assumed, is the strong induction here. So we're, we assume that it works for all these lower values. And so now, we can show that it, uh, it, uh, worked for this value, because we know this does follow the formula. Kinda the point here. We know this follows the formula. And we know this follows, the formula, I mean, like, that, this, it's in this form, right? So, uh, follows formula follows formula by our hypothesis. Right? So we can just use those values. It's gonna be 3, and it's gonna be 2 to the n minus 1, right, 2 to the n minus 1 plus 1, minus 2, 2 to the n minus 2 plus 1, equals 2 to the n plus 1. And we just now have to show this is, this is true. So it's gonna be, I mean, now it's just like, you just figure it out. So, gonna be, uh, 3, um, uh, times 2 to the n over 2 plus 3, minus 2 times 2 to the n over 4 plus, uh, minus 2, equals 2 to the n plus 1. Hopefully that makes sense, just doing the exponents. And then, uh, yes, this is basically 3 halves to the n minus 1 half to the n plus 1, equals 2 to the n plus 1. Which is, of course, this is just to the n. Goes to the n plus 1. And this is true. True. Um, there we go. This is true. Uh, so, so there we go. We've basically proved it. We've shown that it is true for some pair. So what's important is that in our inductive step here, in our inductive, uh, in our inductive step, we used two prior values. So basically, uh, we need to show that there's two base, like, base case numbers that actually work, right? We use the prior value, n minus, n minus 1, and also n minus 2. And then we do strong induction here, so we assume, is there any question? Yeah. Yeah, sorry, can I scroll up a bit? Hopefully I'm at a good place now? Yeah, I don't know if I am. That was 4 minutes ago, actually, so never mind. Um, so the, uh, uh, strong induction, the strategy here, is that instead of just assuming it's true for a specific, um, value, and assuming it's true for the next one, uh, then we just prove, assume that it's true all the way up to some point, and then we wanna prove that that means necessarily that the next one must be also true. And if you combine this again with the base case, it's kind of another form of induction called strong induction. Yeah, you probably could do it like that. So someone asked, why isn't, why isn't i less than n minus 1, not i less than n? Uh, you could probably, you could probably do it like that. And then you're, uh, you'd be showing, you'd have to show, so if instead you chose i less than equal to n, you would then have to show, uh, that fn plus 1 equals 2 to the n plus 1 plus 1. Right, the next value. So if you're just assuming all the way up to n, uh, yeah, so basically, like, we did, we did that instead, and then we just showed it for n. So maybe not n itself. It's kind of a weird way of phrasing it. I think a better way of phrasing it is like that. Probably a better way of phrasing it. Not including n. Right? So hopefully that makes sense. No, yes, you can do it like this, too. I have it here. Doesn't have to be equal to. Um, but yeah, there you go. So that is a strong induction uh, question. Hopefully that's clear. It's not a wild amount of work, but figuring out what to do, figuring out what algebra to write a little bit, like, we're doing the algebra, it's not that hard, but figuring out just to get to this line, or knowing to use the formula here, that's the, that's the tricky part, or knowing that you're allowed to use it, right? Because even proofs, like, it has to have to be allowed to use the formulas you're using, right? So, yeah. Like, we're allowed to turn this into this, because we assume that it's, that the formula holds for every number up to, but not including n. So this is before n, n minus 1, n minus 2, this is lo- less than n. So the formula does hold here, according to our assumption. And we're using that to prove that necessarily the next value at n must also work. Combine that with the base case, you have a full proof of this. So this is strong induction. The difference between induction and strong, or weak induction and strong induction is, um, uh, for weak induction, you assume n, and you show n plus 1 for the inductive step. For strong induction, you assume every number up to n, but not including n, and then you show n, or you use, you know, every number up to n, maybe including n, you show the next one. That's all that matters. You show the next one after this large set. Well, there's other, other places to use strong induction, but yeah, for recursively defined sequence, like, this is a good, this is a good place to use it, because you need to use two prior values. Right? You don't need to just use one prior value, you need to use two prior values. So, uh, yeah, it's good to, you needed to have two, two, yeah, strong induction works best here. There's other ways to prove this, but that's, that's one way. Okay, made it through. Hopefully that question makes sense. If there's any questions, feel free to ask me if I'm not being clear enough. Uh, and since everything up to n is true, if we prove n, then it must, should also be true for n plus 1, n plus, yeah, right, exactly. Because it's arbitrarily chosen, this n, right? This, this n is a particular number, it's just kind of just any number. So, um, and we're just going up to that. So yeah, so it must be true and so forth. Okay. So there's that. Um, let's see, any other questions suggested here? Uh, question 4 and 5 from this final, did that. Also go through question relating to strong induction from this homework assignment 8 content related to the midterm PDF. Okay, amazing. So this, any particular question from this? It just says strong induction. Okay, so there's this, I don't know, we can, we can kind of just go through it together if you'd like, but we have this, uh, assignment 8. Does anybody have any suggestions from assignment 8, what to do? Anyone I find that might be useful? Okay, let's take a look. Let's take a look through. Suppose this sequence, so this is probably a strong induction. Proved by strong induction. But we can probably do that. True, pre-should be greater than p of k plus 3. Must it follow that p of n is true for every integer greater than 0? Uh, right. Yeah. And then this beginning is just regular induction. It's the same as the first question I did. This, yeah, this, yeah, yeah. This here. Da, 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 proved by induction. Well, you can try this one. I know it's not, uh, strong induction. We can do this one, too. Oh, this one, I, yeah, we could try, this one looks confusing. It's a floor in the floor in the base there. You can try this. Okay, I mean, I just, I just wanna try this one, cause I, I don't know how to do it, just looking at it. So can we do number 2? Yeah, that sounds good. Number 2 is the one I was gonna do here. So let's try it. And since we have the solution, I, I feel okay, just giving it a try at least. Hopefully that's okay with everybody. So, uh, question 2 is suppose that b1, b2, b3 is a sequence defined, uh, as follows. b1 is 0, b2 is 3, and bk is this. So bk is 5 times b floor of k over 2 plus 6 for every integer k greater than or equal to 3. Prove by strong induction that bn is divisible by 3 for every integer n greater than 1. Okay. Okay, so uh, base case. Base case. Uh, okay, before we even do this, there's a formula for the floor of, the floor of k over 2, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I know there is a formula for floor of k over 2. Is it in the formula sheet you guys have? Sorry, it's probably in the um, let's see what the inductive step has. Probably, it's probably in the inductive step. Um, include that. Bk. Da, 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 da. Okay, whatever. Let's do the, let's do the base case first, and then we'll, we'll get to that in a second. So base case. Base case. Uh, we just need to show, what does it show? P1 and P2. Right? We have that. Yeah, k over 2, yes, if even, and k, yes, yes, yes. There you go. That's what I was trying to say. Just forgot what it was off the top of my head. So k over 2, from the, from the description here, from like a chat here, is k over 2, makes sense. If, uh, k is even, and it's k minus 1 over 2, if, um, yeah, k, oh yeah, k minus 1 over 2, if k is odd. Okay, we'll use that in a second. I think, I don't know, that's, that's what I think we should use. That's, I don't know if I see it in the formula, but anyways, in the solution, but let's try it. Base case is, um, uh, we wanna show, uh, that this is true for every integer n greater than 1, so we're just gonna try to start with p of 1. This is a kinda screenshot here. Let's see what the screenshot is. Asian Hope Principle. Is that, oh yeah, I, different formula, but I appreciate the sending. I think that's, yeah. Yeah, so just prove b1, b2, yeah. So p b1 is 0, b2 is 3, so we're gonna choose that. So p1 is for, uh, k equals 1. I like to call it just pk equals 1 here. So let's do that. So we have b1 equals, um, uh, uh, oh, sorry, yeah, equals b oh, divisible by 3, that's unproven, sorry. Divisible by 3. So 0, uh, is divisible by 3, so 0, or 3 divides 0. Um, so there we have, uh, uh, that's true for that one. And then p k equals 2, b2 is, um, uh, b1, okay, is 3, 3 divides 3, just highlight a little bit what I'm saying here. That's that, that's that. Therefore, base case is true. Okay, now, the actual induction. So step 2, step 1 was this, step 2 is induction. Um, now we need to by strong induction, so we assume that, um, uh, bk 3 divides bk, or bi, let's say, uh, for all i less than equal to n minus 1. And, uh, yeah, okay. And then we need to show from here. This down. So assume assume. Uh, and then we need to show that 3 divides bn. That's it, we need to show b divides 3, uh, 3 divides bn. So what's bn? bn, we need to show basically, uh, implies that, uh, 3 divides bn is this whole thing. 5 times b floor k over 2 plus 6. And um, we assume that 3 divides of all these previous b values, right? What's important to note here is that, um, basically, k over, floor of k over 2 is, or sorry, I guess this would be n over 2, right? The floor of n over 2 is less than, sorry, is less than n. So it's a previous value. So we know that it is divisible by 3, right? So basically, we know that this is, uh, divisible by 3. By 3. This down. Again, how do we know that? We know that from our assumption here, is that for all the previous n values, uh, the bn value, the bi value is divisible by 3. This is a previous value. We know it's divisible by 3, therefore, b n over 2 can be written as 3 times some k. Right? It's multiple 3. So that means that, uh, so, so basically that means that, uh, that 3 divides 5 times 3k plus 6, which is clearly true. So actually, we did, we didn't need this at all. I, I guess that kind of goes along with this. Right? So it kind of matches with this here. But, um, yeah, so it's gonna factor out a 3, it's gonna be 5 ti- uh, factor out a 3, so it's gonna be 5k plus 2. This is clearly true. This is clearly true. So we're done. We assumed this. Uh, we showed this is true. Basically, there. And I guess I should logically equivalent this. And then, yeah, we switch, and then that's, that's, that's it. That's the induction. A lot more words in the solution than, than, uh, I think is necessary. So let me recap that, cause that's kind of a little bit all over the place. So we have this sequence, b1, b2, b3, blah, blah, blah. b1 is 0, b3 is, b2 is 3. And this, uh, kind of recursive formula here, recursive formula. What matters is that this is some earlier value of b, right? The, of the b sequence. This is some earlier value, the floor of k over 2. So for every integer k greater than 3, prove by strong induction that bn is divisible by 3 for every integer n greater than or equal to 1. So base case is just these first parts. So are they divisible by 3? Yes, they are, right? They are divisible by 3. Um, and then, uh, since the base case is true, we can move on to the inductive step. So we assume, since it's strong induction, that the what we're trying to prove works for every number up to n minus 1, including n minus 1. And then from there, we just need to prove that it works for n, based off this assumption. So that's what we're showing here, showing that it works for n, which would mean this. We know that earlier value, that's an earlier value, right? That's what I'm saying here, that this is an earlier value of the sequence. We know that that is divisible by 3. That's what we assumed here. So we can write that as 3 times k, or some k, I'll just maybe go like this, like this. And from there, it's clear that the actual sequence is divisible by 3, and we're done. So yeah, there we go. Hopefully that made sense. Hopefully that was, that was alright there. Um, that's our strong induction proof. We can try one more. There's one more strong induction question in here, so we can just try that. So here we go. Suppose that h0, h1, h2 is a sequence defined by that, and that this recursive formula holds for every integer k greater than 3. It's like some mega Fibonacci sequence. For every integer k greater than 3, prove the strong, by strong induction, that h of n is less than 3 to the n. For every integer K greater than three, prove the strong, by strong induction, that H of N is less than three to the N for every integer N greater than three. So basically, again, we just start with base case, and so use a purple pen. Part one is base case. So show, um, P of zero holds. So that means H zero is less than equal to three to the zero. Means one is less than equal to three, which is true. Then we want to show that P of one holds, which is H one is less than equal to three to the one, which is two is less than equal to three. That holds, obviously. How about I, uh, below check marks? Then we want to show P two holds, because that's what we have, right? We all the way to two, so that means H two is less than three to the two. Uh, H two is three, the three is less than nine. That holds. So we have our base case. We especially need three here, because we're gonna be using three prior values, right? So we're just gonna be basically showing for N, like, we're starting at, at K equals three. So we need, uh, H zero, H one, and H two, right? So we need to show that the formula works for those, for those guys. I bet, this is not part two, this is part one, I don't know why I said part two. Um. Part two is the inductive step. By strong induction, you know what's strong induction? When you need like multiple previous values. So we're going to assume. That the fact is true that HI is less than equal to three to the I. Right, that's what I'm trying to show, right? Yeah. HI less than equal to three to the I, um, for. All I less than equal to N minus one, right? So all the way up to N. Now we want to show. That H N. Less than equal to three to the I. So, yeah, let's try this. So we have, uh, we know H N is defined recursively as H N minus one plus H N minus two plus H N minus three, less than equal to three to the I. And we know each of these are individually less than three to the N, kind of. So this is, this is, this is less than, is we know H N minus one is less than three to the N minus one. Um, which is, um, which is less than three to the, um, three to the N. Or three, sorry, that's supposed to be an N there. Supposed to be an N. Through the N. I'll deal, talk about that in a second. And then we have H of N minus two, less than three to the N minus two, which is less than three to the N. And then we have H of N minus three, which is less than three to the N minus three, which is less than three to the N. So therefore. We know this, this is from our, I guess I can't change the color, but we know this is, we know this from our hypothesis. So, um, now that we're here. Looking back at this, we know then that H of N minus one, somebody, use a different color. You need to say it as three to the N minus one, three to the N. That you're saying this, whoop. You're saying this should be N minus, uh, what am I doing? This should be N minus one. Oh, in the hypothesis. You need to say it as three to the N minus one. Here? Like, this should be N minus one? H. H N minus one, less than three to the N minus one. Less than three to the N minus one, probably. Like the green circle part, yeah, three to the N, you mean, probably. Um, why N minus one here? We know, assume H. That's kind of what I'm saying, right? Just saying I all the way up to N minus one. This should work. I think what I'm doing should work. I'm kind of saying that, because strong induction, so it's a lot of different values. Uh, yeah, I can't prove that, you're right. Which is false. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Which is what I was about to say. Isn't true. So H N minus, which is smaller than. Which is bigger. Yeah, that makes sense, what you're saying. What's, what you're saying makes sense, there is something wrong here. But I can prove that three to the N minus one plus three to the N minus one is less than three to the N, in the green circle, yeah. Oh, so these should be N minus ones. This is less than equal to N minus one. There you go. I got it. I understand. There. That's what you're saying. There we go. Perfect. That makes sense. Amazing. So actually, I'll undo that, just to quickly explain if people are confused, but then, uh, but then, yeah, okay. So, so in the end, I want to show, I want to show this, right? So what I was doing here is just saying that this is less than two to the N. So my next step would have been here, um, that, okay, so if H of N minus one is smaller than three to the N. H of N minus two is smaller than three to the N. H of N minus three is smaller than three to the N. That means that H of N minus one plus H of N minus two plus H of N minus three is less than three to the N plus three to the N, plus three to the N. And now I need to show that this is less than three to the N. Right, that's what, I need to show this. So I need to show that this is, this is true, but I can't show that's true. That's not true. Um, right, generally. So this is, this is not good. But instead, if I were to do three to the N minus one here. On all these. Uh, this I can show. Right, so three to the N minus, so now, now I need to show this. Do a different color, I guess. Show this. So three to the N minus, well, I'll just say three to the N. Uh, one third through the N plus one third, three to the N plus one third, three to the N, less than equal to three to the N. So three to the N, less than equal to three to the N. That's true. And so there we go. That's it, that's, that's it, that's the inductive, that's the inductive step. Right? We basically just break apart each of these terms with some upper bounds and show that that upper bound is less than three to the N, or less than or equal to three to the N. And, yeah, there you go. That's all. If someone raised their hand, yeah, you can, you can unmute, that's.
Um, yeah, for the, in the original problem statement, it says H of N is less than equal to three to the N. So wouldn't we have to say, um, three to the N minus, uh, H of N minus two is less than equal to three to the N minus two? And like, H of N minus three is less than equal to three to the N minus three?
Yeah.
Add them and show it?
I just wrote it here, right? That's what, so that's this, right? H of M minus one, less M minus, M minus one, M minus two, M minus two.
So can we just add them together and sort of like?
Yeah, okay. You could do that, you could do that too, yeah. You could do that too. I was kind of just trying to make them all the same number, that probably would work, yeah. So if I, if I just try that, like, if I just said, uh, three to the N minus one plus three to the N minus two plus three to the N minus three is less than equal to three to the N? I mean, yeah, yeah. This, this should work, because we're gonna have one over three times three to the N plus one over nine times three to the N. Plus one over twenty seven times three to the N is less than equal to three to the N. And this is some small fraction, right? Three to the N times whatever, one third plus one ninth plus twenty seven. One third plus one ninth plus one over twenty seven is for, you know, around forty eight percent. This would be a little, a little bit off, off here. We're engineers, so we can be a little off. Around forty eight percent of three to the N, which is clearly true, right? So, yeah. So that's, that also works. Makes sense with that one? Please. Or. Use. To say highlighted. Values. I'll say another way. Okay. That works. Okay, so, yeah, that's our, uh, that's our, uh, induction for that, that question there. Hopefully, that made sense. I'm doing a lot more induction than I expected to do, but here we are. So last half hour, we have, we have another half hour, so maybe we can do some other questions? Yes, new question four, sure. From the same document? Yeah, let's see. I have to read it properly. Make sure it's the same. Suppose P of N is a property such that P of one, P of zero, P of one, P of two are all true. Um. Uh, for each integer K greater than or equal to zero, if P of K is true, then, uh, P of K plus three is true. Uh, that's fine, okay, so must it follow that P of N is true for every integer N greater than or equal to zero? If yes, yeah. Um, so we know that, uh, okay, we, we know the base case here, right? And we know that, uh. If P of K is true, P of P of K. Imploys P of K plus three. So the way we do this, every integer N, okay, so P of K implies P of K plus three. Which means P of K. Yeah, this is true. That's right, this is true, obviously, but, um. That's the inductive step. Yeah, this is true. How do I exactly show this? I, this is true. So let me make sure I'm saying everything, let's just check solution, it is true, right? Okay, so P of N is true as well, yeah, okay. Um. Yeah, use quotient remainder theorem, so N is some multiple of three, is either three times, three times Q. So N, uh. Is one of. N equals three possible things. Three times Q, three times Q plus one, three times Q plus two. Yeah, which is very similar to this modular arithmetic. Um, so if P of N is true, so that means P of N, uh, P of N. Is P of three Q, which is a multiple of three. Uh, P of zero is true, we know that. We also know that P of three is true. We know that P of six is true. In fact, we know all the multiples of three are true. Yeah, there you go, this is how you do it. I figured it out. So let me just, uh, let me, let me write that a little bit better. So we know this. We also know that P of zero is true. How do I write this? True. Therefore. Little too many symbols, but therefore, P of three is true. Therefore, P of, uh, six is true. Right, how do we know this? Because of this, it's like periodic, basically. The truth is, the truth function is periodic. Um, dot, dot, dot. All multiples. Of three. Are true. Right? Uh, because it's periodic with a period of three, basically. So we're gonna be looking at multiples of three. That's kind of how I know that we're gonna be, that I need to have the, the devalue here to be three. Um, okay, so. This is true. For this reason that I just explained right there. Then for the next step, for P of, P of N equals P of Q, uh, three Q plus one, right? Basically, remainder one mod three, so we're looking for. That's all of these ones, P of one, right? So P of one. Is true. Therefore, P of four is true. Therefore, P of, uh, seven. Is true. Dot, dot, dot. All numbers with, uh, all N such that N mod three equals one is true. I'm running out of space, so I'm gonna put this underneath, maybe. Put a little star. All N such that N mod three equals one is true. When I say is true, I mean P of that N is true. Uh, and then, and then, so that means that, that's, that's mod one, uh, that's, that's equal to one mod three. So, uh, this is true. And then the final case, we know P of N equals P of three Q plus two. And very similarly, right? We know that P of. We know P of two is true, like, we just know that, because it just told us that P of two is true. Therefore, P of five is also true. Therefore, P of eight is also true. Dot, dot, dot. All N such that N mod three equals two is true. Right, remainder of two. So then, that's, that's what this is, right? The remainder of two mod three, so, or divide by three, whatever. Uh, when, when you divide by three. So this is true as well. That's all the cases. N is one of these three things. We showed that if it's any of these three things, then it's gonna be true. So this is the quotient remainder theorem is really powerful, because, you know, you can, you can prove a lot of things by just noting that, like, every number is either a multiple of three, one off of a multiple of three, or two off of a multiple of three. That's it. Those are three options. Or nothing, nothing special, nothing special about multiple of three, right? So every number is either a multiple of four, one off of a multiple of four, two off of a multiple of four, or three off of a multiple of four. And that's it, those are your three options. So if you just break it into cases and prove it for each of those cases, then you've just proven it for all numbers. So, yeah, there's that. Um. Good. There is our, uh, that's, that's question four. Hopefully that makes sense. Twenty minutes still, if anybody has any suggestions, please let me know. Otherwise, I will just, I have some other, I have, I have other questions, but. Might just be nicer to you suggest, but, whatever, I don't, I don't mind. So. Floor and ceiling, yeah, actually, I have a proof that I wanted to do for that. I thought was kind of interesting. Yeah, let's do, sure, we can do that. So, um, here's a proof. To prove. That, um, uh, for all, how about I just take a screenshot instead of copying? In the textbook, but. Thought I just, I, I proved it a little bit differently. Also correctly, but just differently. So for all real numbers X and all integers M, floor of X plus M is floor of X plus M. So, yeah, we basically need to show, we need to show that these two things are equal. So the way we do this, right? So floor, what, what's important to notice here is that, uh, okay, so, so let's say the floor. Okay, so floor of X plus M. Uh. Let's start with floor of X. So the floor of X. Let's say that's equal to some N. What does that mean? That means that X is between N, right? N and N plus one. As, uh, equal on that one, yeah. So equal, equals on this one. Because the floor of two is two, so that would be that. So that's what it means for, that's what the floor, that's just the definition of the floor, right? It's, it's basically on the number line here, if I just, just draw it, right? If I have a number line, if I have some number N, or some number X, I mean. It's sandwiched between two integers, right? N plus one and N. So we, uh, take the lower one. That's what the floor is. And then the seal. The seal of X. Right, seal of X equals, uh, P, I don't know. Imploys that X is between P and P minus one. Right, so on the number line here. That would look like we have an X, we have a P, and we have a P minus one. So you take the upper value for the ceiling. Or the, the right value. The right, like the left one for the floor and the right one for the ceiling. Um, this is by definition, this is not like some sort of deep math thing, this is just the definition of. This is by definition. This is not like some sort of deep math thing. This is just the definition of a seal and floor. Um, so, from here, we can prove the theorems, right, based off of this? So, for example, the floor of X plus M is floor of X plus M. So, let's, uh, let's do that now. The way we're gonna do this is we're gonna say, okay, well, let N, let N be equal to the floor of X. That's it. Like I just said, that implies that X is between N and N plus 1. If I, how did I do this? I have to remember now. If I, one note really screws up on me here. There we go. If the, uh, let's say I have another number, K, which is the floor of X plus M, that implies to me that X plus M is between K and K plus 1. Great. From here, we just, uh, subtract M from both sides, right? Yeah, subtract M from both sides. So, from all sides. So, uh, uh, subtracting M from all sides, here we have K minus M less than equal to X, less than K, K minus M plus 1. This directly tells us that the floor of X equals K minus M. Right? So, hopefully, that makes sense to go from here to here. That's definition, right? Kind of using this, using, whoops, using this definition just backwards. So, we have the inequality. K, X, I mean, is bounded between K minus M and K minus M plus 1. So, that what we're saying is that the floor of X is K minus M. Uh, what's K? K was the floor of X plus M. The floor of X equals the floor of X plus M. Or X plus M minus M. In other words, the floor of X plus M equals the floor of X plus M. And there we go. That's what we're trying to show. So, like, what, what does this mean? Like, the floor, the floor of 5, which is the floor of 2 plus 3, equals the floor of 2. I guess it can be like 5.5, let's say. 5.5 is 2.5 plus 3. The floor of 2.5 plus 3, which is 2 plus 3, which is 5, and that's also clearly what the floor of this is, which is 5. So, we are all good. We got something that's true. Just for, for just example, for X equals 5, N equals 3. Hopefully, that makes sense for this, this proof here like that. Would this property hold for seal as well? Probably this, the proof would be, probably the proof would be pretty similar. Be 6, and this would be 6 as well. Yeah, we can try to prove it. I don't know. I, I don't know. Off the top of my head, let's try to prove it, and let's see. So, if instead, it's seal here. Very similar start, right? So, we're gonna start with, I'm gonna assume N is, uh, the ceiling of X, seal of X, which implies to us that X is between N and N plus 1. Great. Now, we're gonna say K is, uh, the ceiling of X plus M, which implies to us that X plus M is between, uh, K and K, uh, minus 1 here, sorry, minus 1 here. K minus 1. Subtract M from everything. It's gonna be K minus M minus 1, less than X, less than equal to K minus M, which means, uh, yeah, which means the, that the, um, the ceiling of X equals K minus M. Yeah, everything's gonna work out the same. So, it's gonna be the ceiling of X equals ceiling of X plus M minus M. Uh, so, seal of X plus M equals the seal of X plus M. Oh, yeah, so exactly same proof, just different symbols, but exactly same proof. I, I guess, and, and the inequalities are slightly different. So, that's just something I'm looking out for, right? The inequalities are, I guess I don't need to state this. This is, this is useless. I never use N again after this. Yeah, it's useless to say. So, never mind. I never use N here either, right? All that. Just in my proof earlier, I wrote that. Maybe just sort of as a reminder what, what that does, but... Okay, so, yeah, there's that. Uh, let's see, is there anything else? Let's see, I have, uh, of course, feel free to send questions. Yeah, how about we do proof by contradiction? So, proof by contradiction? Sure, we can do that as well. Yeah. So, yeah, which is proof by negation, yeah. So, uh, there is no... That'd be writing, I'll just take a screenshot. There is no integer that is both even and odd. So, the way we prove this is we suppose, suppose not, as in, suppose, uh, there, there exists an integer, or whatever, an N, an integer N, into, or N, such that N is even and N is odd. We wanna just basically show that this leads to something that is nonsensical. This is something that, that is, you know, uh, a contradiction. So, something that's always false. So, if this, if this necessarily leads to something that's always false, that means this must be false. So, um, yeah, so we, we do that now. So, if N is even, this, is it, this, whatever, N is even, not if, N is even implies that, uh, N equals 2K. Let's say K1, I guess. If N is odd, this implies that N equals 2K2 plus 1. Uh, now, we were saying, this, this is one, a single N. This is not, these are not 2 different numbers. This is the same N. So, that must mean that 2K1 equals 2K2 plus 1. And so, we get 2K1 minus 2K2 equals 1, 2K1 minus K2 equals 1. In other words, K1 minus K2 equals a half. This is a problem. But this is a contradiction. This is, this is always false. Uh, why do you think? Anybody in the chat have any idea why? Why is this always false? Give you guys a minute. I'll drink my water. Not an integer. That's it. So, right, so K1 minus K2, K1's an integer, K2 is an integer. Um, K1, the difference is always an integer, right? We know K1, this must be an int. I'll just, I'll just emphasize this here. K1 is an int. K2 is also an int. So, the difference must be an integer, but it's not. Not an int. Um, the, the difference of 2 integers is always an integer. So, therefore, contradiction. I don't know, that, that's whatever. Therefore, not an int. Uh, contradiction, or always false. False. Therefore, initial assumption... Yeah, division of, the division of ints is not always an int, but everything else, some difference in product, yeah, so, um, integers are closed under those operations. Initial assumption, uh, of suppose not is false. Therefore, true. I don't know. Yeah, implies true. Statement is true. Ah, state, mint, is true. Thought that was a kind of a fun one. Da, 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 that's fine. Try this one, maybe? The square root of any irrational number is irrational. We just wanna prove this by contradiction. So, uh, the square root of any irrational number. So, let's, let's say K is an irrational number. K is an irrational number. Uh, this implies that K, you know, cannot be written as M over N. So, for, for integers M and N. So, now, we wanna say, okay, the square root of K, um, is, is irrational. That's what we're trying to prove. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna assume the negation. Assume the negation. That root, root K is rational. What this implies to us is that root K can be written as P over Q, right? Okay, so that would mean that K is equal to P squared over Q squared. Right? This is a problem. K is irrational. That's not, that, we're not assuming the negation of that. That, we're still, that's still in the question here. K is irrational, which means K cannot be written as the ratio of 2 integers. These are 2 integers. P squared is an int. P is an int, so P squared is an int. Q squared is an int. This is a rational number. This is irrational. An irrational number cannot be equal to a rational number. Therefore, uh, that's a contradiction. Tra- di- come on. Di- tion. Uh, therefore, a lot of therefor's. Therefore, um, uh, the negation is false. It, it, come on, is false, which means our statement is true. State, and is true. There you go. Hopefully, that's, that was an interesting one. This one we already did, this one we already did. Okay, so we talked about these ones already. That's the statement. This is our statement. I guess it's a, I guess it's a predicate, but, yeah. That, that's the thing we're trying to prove. I'm using the word statement a little loose here, but the thing we're trying to prove. Um, okay, good. So, okay, there's that. Can we prove by counterexample? Uh, the square root of any... Uh, well, you can't prove this by counterexample. The square root of any irrational number is irrational, because that's true, right? This is true. Um, but you could prove this by counterexample. Sure, root, if you could say like the, well, but how would you really do that? Like, they root E is... Like, how do you know? How do you know root E is not, yeah, how do you know root E is not rational? It's not, but how do you know that? Well, you know that because of this theorem, right? But then you're, then you're doing circular reasoning, so can't do that. So, okay, that's that. Uh, probably have time for one more, so let's see what else I have here. Oh, yeah, let's try this one. It was not that bad. Uh, basically, prove, prove this, a little bit of divisibility here. For all integers A, B, and C, if A divides B and A divides C, then A divides B plus C. So, um, we know that A divides B. This tells us that B is, uh, some multiple of A, right? So, it's gonna be A times K1. And A divides C tells us that, uh, C is some multiple of A, so, uh, A, C is some, A times some K2. So, then, we just wanna show that A, so we know this. We know this, so assume this. We just wanna show now that A divides B plus C. So, that would mean that B plus C, is that how I did it? Yeah, B plus C is some multiple of A times, uh, sorry, beep, yeah, is some multiple of, how do I do it? Yeah. Times some K. Yeah, B, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. A divides A times K1 plus A times K2. There we go. That's, this is the step I forgot here. There you go. Right? Because just, because just by what we, we just said that these were, this is true. We just said that B is that, and we said that uh, C is that. X, X, um, so, now, from here, yeah, we just basically, we just say, um, that A divides A times K1 plus K2. So, uh, A divides, that's just some K3, right? A, A3. This is clearly true, but the reason this is true is this implies that, um, uh, what does it imply? This implies that A divides B, A. This is true. Yeah. This is, yeah, sorry, I this is true. How do I show this again? This is, this implies to us, B, so this is gonna be AK3 equals AK4. Yeah, okay. I mean, this is kind of a, this is kind of a, kind of a... Why did it get so messy all of a sudden? Let me just go do it from the beginning. These are our assumptions. We're trying to show this. This is the same thing as this. I'm just gonna immediately turn this into, um, A times... Yeah, 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 okay, here, here we go. Here we go. This is, B plus C. What is B plus C? B plus C is AK1 plus AK2, right? We know that from here. Um, we can factor out an A is K1 plus K2. Uh, since B plus C can be written as A times some K3, right? Call this K3. Uh, this implies to us that A divides B plus C. There we go. I was turning it into a, into a, turning it into a divides too fast. There we go. We know this is B plus C, just literally, by just definition. That's, we said B was that, and C was that. We rewrite as that, just some K3. So, B plus C is some A times some K3, and so, that means that, uh, B plus C is a multiple of A. And now, we're done. And it's 8 o'clock. So, there we go. There's our time. Yeah, transitivity, would that help here? Uh, not exactly. I don't know if that would, I don't know if that would help here. Maybe it would. This is fine. This is, this is probably how it's meant to be proven in this context. Okay, so that is our time. It's 8 o'clock. So, how does everybody feel about the stuff we talked about? Good? Talked about a lot of stuff, to be honest. We did a lot of questions. Uh, we went through probably all of these, right? Rational stability, QR theorem, contradictory deduction. Yeah, we did every single one there. Um, so, yeah, so hopefully, this was helpful. Um, some of these questions were a little tricky, so sorry I had a little, especially in this question, I had a little algebra issue. Where was the algebra issue? This question had a little algebra issue, but the algebra issue was solved. Um, and, uh, hopefully, it all made sense. The, uh, hope it made sense, the, uh, induction, the weak and strong induction, they're only slightly different. And, uh, we did a lot of induction, and then just these last couple proofs about ceilings and floors and contradictions and rational numbers and divisors and stuff like this. So, when I took this course, we did no proofs. So, my, my course is completely different than, uh, than, uh, your course. your course for MTC 14. Uh, we did, I had a different professor and, uh, he did it completely differently. I really enjoyed it. We did lots of other, we did lots of other things, which, which were really interesting. So that's why my notes for this course are, have no proofs in them, because there are no proofs. So my, because the question was, what are some tips based on my midterm 2? My midterm 2 was, was completely different. So, but what I would assume, I would, I mean, you're going to have some kind of induction question. So maybe I would, uh, try to practice those. I don't know if you're going to have a strong induction question, but maybe I'll have just an induction question. So like, prove like, like, for example, there's a couple that are just kind of fun to prove. Uh, where are we? Like the, the sum of the integers. Yeah, probably 8 questions like last time, probably. Like, the sum of the integers is like n, n plus 1, the sum of the even integers is n, sorry, the sum of the ints. Ints is n, n plus 1 over 2. The sum of evens is n times n plus 1. And then the sum of the odds. Yeah, odds is n squares. You could just try a couple of these by induction. And then, uh, yeah, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be probably good practice. And then, uh, what else would you have? Maybe some ceiling floor questions. Probably something, probably, I would be surprised if you had, if you had something similar. I would, I wouldn't be surprised if you had something similar to this, something like this. But to be honest, I don't really know the difficulty. So I don't, I don't have a good grasp of the difficulty that, uh, your professor's doing. So in fact, I've never had magic, so I don't really know how it is tested like. But, uh, hopefully, uh, they're not too bad. How was the difficulty for midterm 1? Not bad? That's good. Last average is 65. It's okay. That's pretty normal. Engineering average. Not too hard. That's good to hear. Okay, guys. Well, that's our time, so I'll stop recording. Um, I'll, uh, stop recording here. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't really have that much more advice, I guess, for the, for the midterm, because I, I just don't really know exactly what.